Mr. Foreman?
Good evening. This is City of New Jersey Council meeting. Today's date is November 6, 2022, at 6:30 PM. This meeting has been due to advertise the city's newspaper and performance with the open club. Meeting act by the way, on the sunshine law, Robo.
Dan report. Melara.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Ramona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sisra.
Present.
Six of the ten. Excuse me, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Let's put on a record that Councilman Dan report would not be here this evening due to him filming a little bit under the white light.
Thank you, Councilman. I was about to say, thank you. Okay. That's an oath you have approved in previous minutes.
The third, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's like, Mayor, you got a party in here?
I do.
Step right up.
You got music? Okay, Russell Smith. Officer of office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. Repeat after me. I.
Aye, Russell Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
The United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Office of firefighter.
Office of firefighter.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mayor, you're given the chance to say anything.
You go with the right.
No, I'm talking about the firefighter.
So you'd like to come up and introduce your family and say a couple words?
Uh, yeah.
And Harry.
Uh, thank you. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to serve the city.
Open.
Real good department, real good city here. Uh, so my mom Diane, my dad Ross, my brother Joe. Uh, still happy to be here and starting a career.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to say congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Firefighter Smith.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Thank you.
And I wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Council Mayor, uh, Firefighter Smith, he comes from us. He's our last, in our government transfer from Voorhees. Uh, he has a volunteer and a long line of experience that he's going to help out the department great. So, you know, welcome, Firefighter Smith, Russell.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So now we have police officers. And I'd like to have Dean Golfer-Goldvold-Godvold.
Yeah, that's right.
Excuse me. Deion Godvold. I keep the remnant. Oh, great. Repeat after me.
Yes, ma'am.
Officer of office of State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. He doesn't. Oh. This is the Officer of Office of State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. Repeat after me, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I.
Aye.
Deion Godvold. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments.
And the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
And all the duties of.
The Office of Police Officer.
The Office of Police Officer.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I just want to say, uh, thank you to the council, uh, for giving me this opportunity. And, uh, thank the mayor for giving me this opportunity.
You're welcome.
And, uh, thank you all for, uh, giving me this opportunity as well.
Wow.
So here's my fiancee, Anais Oso.
Okay.
And here is my daughter, Sereni Godvold.
Okay.
And my son is at home. He, he was able to make it.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next week, I'd like to have Kobe Roberts. Officer of office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
Aye, Kobe Roberts.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Police Officer.
All the duties of the Office of Police Officer.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
So I want to thank the council for giving me this opportunity. Also, thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, also like to thank, uh, Chief Williams for giving me this opportunity. Um, and also thank you for my family for being a part of me and helping me get to this point. Uh, this is my lovely mother.
Yeah.
Uh, this is my oldest brother, Colin, and, uh, that is his girlfriend, Christina. Thank you.
All right. Okay, this is the Officer of Office for the State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. Repeat after me. I.
Aye, Brock Trejo.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Police Officer.
All the duties of the Office of Police Officer.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Again, City Council, Mayor, Chief, thank you for this opportunity. Um, you know, I just, I promise to just hold the highest standard and form, maintain the highest ethical standard, protect and service City Pleasantville, and I'll hold my oath. Um, and this is my wife, Melissa, my two kids, my mom, my father, and my sister, Roxanne.
Okay, and last but not least, we have Harry Webb. Mister Officer of Office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I.
Aye, Harry Webb.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of Police Officer.
All the duties of the Office of Police Officer.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Uh, again, I just wanted to say, City Council members, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I promise I'm gonna do best of my abilities, keep the city safe. Um, this is my father, Tom.
The council, thank you. This, this certainly helped me get to what I'm trying to get to as far as my status is concerned. Uh, these four candidates right now, they just started the police academy, so you won't see them again for another six months. Um, they'll probably be half the size that they are right now, but they did everything that they needed to do to get into the police academy, which was that, uh, pre-P T test, which has been playing a lot of people, a lot of candidates. So I wish them love. Family members, you're, like I said, out in the hallway, you're gonna see them coming home complaining, sore, all those things, but they're gonna need your support to get through the police academy. All right? Thank you. Good luck to all of you. I just want to grab you.
Hey, Brock, can you start?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, can I get this? Okay. Okay.
Please.
Congratulations.
Next, we have the best practices.
Good evening. Um, we talked about it at the finance committee, but what it is, is an annual, we have to do a, what's called a best practices inventory survey. And what it is, is list of questions that we have to let the state know that we are following the rules, regulations. There's a number of questions, uh, everybody has them. Uh, some of them are unscored points, some are scored points. The max you can get out of this is 42. We have 39. There, there are a couple of things that we don't have that, we brought it down to the 42. One is we do not have a emergency man, emergency, um, escrow for storm damages that a lot of, very few towns have. Uh, we do have one for storm removal, uh, but not for storm damage. The other two questions we have that were not scored correctly or just is that we do not have, um, E Vs, either a policy to buy electric vehicles or own electrical vehicles. So there, there are the three that we did not get points for. Everything else is, we're, we're in line with what the state expects us to do. Um, everything from, um, do we spend all our money from the, uh, making rest of your funds, to do we file our audit on time, do we file our budget on time, personnel, do we send things up to, uh, personnel, per regarding pensions and, uh, regarding contracts? Everything we do is in line with what state requires us as a municipality to do. I think most of you have this. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer it.
Just want to add the, um, two of the three that we answered no to. As you all know, that we are, that is pending, so we are working on, uh, becoming a, uh, E V friendly community. Um, so those, those things are in work as we speak.
That was another one I saw there. I think it was, I think, uh, committee, it was check yes for committee.
Permit?
I think it was, um, for the committee out having on hand, it's like 2021, 22, where you're lining that. And that was, yeah. We had no hat.
Yeah. But then we were looking forward towards regarding.
Ethics?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we, we do have an ethics ordinance on the line. And that one question is, do we have ethics?
Who's, did the committee, did it make it for us?
Like what it was, was, partly the question was, do we have an ethics? Yes, we do. Do we have a board that meets regarding the ethics? Or, no, we do not. That was, uh, one of the questions that, uh, we're really not scored at like that, but as long as we have the ethics ordinance in place with the, and I think the ordinance will tell you how we set up a board. We don't have a board. It's something that probably we could have in the future. It's all up to City Council if we want to make an active board. But as a, um, the state is looking for, do we have the ordinance aligned? Yes, we do, and we do not. We would follow the state guideline for ethics. Their, their board.
Any more questions?
As a president, if I may, um, we could, keep on talking about 39 out of 42.
Right.
Right? And we'd said the emergency escrow, and we said, uh, E V friendly. What's the third one? Is it the ethical board in place? What's the third?
Two, two more, many more regarding here. The ethics.
And what, the scoring goes, you need at least 29, or it will affect your, your state aid in December, which is, the way the state aid comes out is like 60, 40, 30, 20, or whatever the numbers. In December, we get 10% of the state aid, which is like $200,000. If we didn't have 29, it would affect the last payment, uh, in the area of about 10%. So we have 39 out of 42. We exceed the 29 minimum.
I have this, I just have a clarification, because you brought up the ethics with the board. And I, this is my question to you, Mr. Louie. Number 22 specifically says, if your municipality has a municipal ethics board, did the municipal ethics board enforce the financial disclosure statement statute by issuing violations to local government officers who were on the 2023 roster but did not file F D S by April 30th? And then it says yes. Were there people who were in violation of the financial disclosure statute?
Um, well, no, we do not have anyone that was not there, because it would have been an A rather than a yes.
Or a no with an explanation, because it says only answer N A if your municipality does not have an ordinance on the books.
Chair, that was gonna be my comment, if I may. Just that when we spoke about this, for those that do not participate in the finance committee to, um, concur with the solicitor, that that answer was supposed to be changed to no, uh, with the expectation that we would bring back to council the current ordinance on file, to review that for any amendments that we think are required.
And, and, just probably, I believe that the state will notify us if anyone has not filed, and they will also reach out to those council people or personnel that do not file.
Um, it says, the local government ethics law designed to ensure transparency in government requires local government officers to file financial disclosure statements annually. Who are the local government officers? Is it the eight of the seven city council and the mayor? Does it include people like you?
There's others. So the clerk will have the list of all those folks that are required to file, um, and the clerk notifies it, uh, annually.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, was elected officials or?
It is, it is both.
It's, it's essentially, it's elected officials, it's people who are policymakers. That's the best overview. If you are in an administrative position where you direct policy, and typically in those, you manage offices, if you were in-house managing specific departments where you were creating policy, those are the people who would typically have to fill out the financial disclosure. And because the structure of every city is different, then those particular individuals may change from city to city.
Okay, thank you.
So just to let you know that that question has to be changed.
Number two, point three.
Has to be changed. Finance committee should meet on that particular one to be put in place.
What's that change? Yeah, what is that change?
Any other question?
Senator. Thank you.
Personal agenda is ordinance number 24, second reading, public care to be held over in session. It's authorizing the severance of a donation to the city of rural property located at 837 Church Street, Lot 47, Lot 29, and authorizing the taking of certain actions in connection therewith.
Any questions? Just a brief explanation on that.
And we, we do have the solicitor who authored this document. The solicitor did not. Now, the solicitor, I stand corrected, I'm sorry. The redevelopment attorney is here, um, if you want to comment as requested by the chairperson or ordinance number 24.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Should I use the microphone? Um, I believe two weeks ago, when I was here, we talked about this ordinance. This ordinance is to authorize the city to accept title to this property, 837 Church, uh, from the church that's donating it back. We're in the process of completing the title, which we've gotten it clean, waiting for this offer, this ordinance to be adopted, and then we'll complete the transaction. We did have to, one, one, uh, last minute item. Uh, the title company was requiring a survey, so we have ordered that survey, uh, from the city engineer. That's being processed. So it's all coming together, but this ordinance opens the door for us to complete the transaction.
What's the name of the church?
I messed this up last night.
It's not church. Faith Center.
G O C, G O C I C. I got that right.
Yeah.
Because last time I added Baptist, then that was.
Right. And faith, that's, we said correct. They clear that for the record. That's what, that's what I was doing. Um, and the other thing is, that is not a donation, it's a, it's $1, right? That's, that, that doesn't make it a donation, right?
That does make it, yes. It's phenomenal consideration, $1 to support the transaction.
All right.
But that does, doesn't change the, the fact that it is a donation, but not to use a dollar in deed to support the conveyance.
Yes. Any questions? Senator.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 25, first reading, fixing salaries and officials and employees of the city.
Explain this. This is the annual salary ordinance that, um, lists the salary ranges for all the positions of the city of Pleasantville. Um, the document, um, is needed to be in file, um, for the orders each year, and we typically do that at the end of the year, in case there's changes throughout the year, so that we're not making multiple changes to the salary ordinance. There's been no change in salaries from January 1st to today's date, other than, uh, those salaries that are applicable through your C D As.
Because, Captain, we offered the conversation that we had from, from the, um, finance committee in reference to remedy a problem that we have.
Yeah, this is not that, that.
Like now. Okay. Um, and typically, what time of the year do you, do you bring this?
Typically, at the end of the year, I try, you know, we need to have them filed by the closing of the, the year, so between October and December, we go to the council.
Any questions? Questions?
President 153, authorizing a change order for an increase of $11,830.06 in the contract to Starborough Marina Group LLC for the Lakes Bay maintenance dredge.
Chair.
Yes.
Can we give an explanation, please, for the change order?
Yes.
Certainly. So, as you see on your document, on your agenda document, the change order is a 1.76% increase of the original, um, cost. Um, and you always have that contingency amount within most of your big documents, because there's times under construction that things come up that are not anticipated or, uh, are, you know, there as it relates to, um, cost. So there was more, more spoil, dredging spoil than what we anticipated, which increased it by the $11,000, uh, which is very minimal with this type of job. Uh, and anytime you do a change order, whether it's a decrease or increase, it has to be done by resolution. Thank you. You're welcome.
What are you doing with the, um, the spoils? How are you really doing with it? Is it, is it irrigation or?
No, so these particular, um, some of the, um, spoil is contaminated arsenic, and those spoils have to be sent up to the designated disposal, uh, space.
This is the annual salary ordinance that lists the salary ranges for all the positions of the City of Pleasantville. The document is needed to be in place for the orders each year. And we typically do that at the end of the year in case there's changes throughout the year so that we're not making multiple changes to the salary ordinance. There's been no change in salaries from January first to today's date other than those salaries that are applicable through your CDAs.
Because, Captain, we offered the conversation that we had from the Finance Committee in reference to remedy a problem that we had.
Yeah, this is not that document.
And typically, what time of the year do you bring this?
Typically, at the end of the year. I try, you know, we need to have them filed by the closing of the year. So between October and December, we can send them to council.
Any questions?
Resolution one hundred fifty-three, authorizing a change order for an increase of eleven thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and zero cents in the contract to Starborough Marina Group LLC for the Lake Bay maintenance dredge.
Chair?
Yes.
Can we give an explanation for the change order?
Yes.
Certainly. So as you see on your document, on your agenda document, the change order is a one point seventy-six percent increase of the original cost. And you always have that contingency amount within most of your big documents because there's times under construction that things come up that are not anticipated or are, you know, there as it relates to cost. So there was more spoil, dredging spoil than what we anticipated, which increased it by the eleven thousand dollars, which is very minimal with this type of job. And anytime you do a change order, whether it's a decrease or increase, it has to be done by resolution.
What are you doing with the spoils? How are you really doing with it? Is it irrigation or...?
No, so these particular... Some of the spoils contaminated arsenic. And those spoils have to be sent up to the designated disposal space, which has been approved by D E P. So we're not reusing any of that material that's coming out of the Marina.
All of the material? It was nothing that you can reuse, all of it? I know we had a discussion about it. Yes.
And I don't know if he's... I'm just asking out of curiosity. Who keeps track of the amount of dredging that came out of it? Do they put it on a weigh scale when it comes out? Does it go on a weigh scale, everything's made?
Yes.
Now, can we consider the dredging completely done by now?
I believe it's completed.
It's completed?
Yes, it's completed.
Well, the work has been done. And we've... I did increase the volume that was spoiled by two-hundred cubic yards. We gave... When we did the estimate, it was for nine thousand cubic yards, which is certainly an estimate. But after review of it and seeing where we can have many docks as possible in use for next spring, we had to remove another two-hundred cubic yards, which is really a minimal amount. We talked about nine thousand, now we're at ninety-two hundred. And this was a little over eleven thousand dollars for a six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar contract to remove this spoil. And this was a... We thought, I thought, it was, anyway, discussed with administration, that this is a bargain to make sure we have two or three more docks available for usage. That I should...
It was a very on-time project. The contractor said twenty-one days. I think it was twenty, twenty-something days.
And they had some equipment breakdowns, so it was done pretty quick there. And then you'll see on the bill list, the payment for the original contract plus change order. Any questions?
Mr. Rudi, you brought up the boat slips. When they're open running and we get them going, are residents going to have first crack at getting slips? Because I know there's a lot of people waiting for the slips to come up. We live here in Pleasantville.
Currently, I'm not sure if there's a residential preference, but that is something that we could talk about when we talk about the rent plan or management plan. We can certainly talk about that.
In light of other discussions, you want to put that in front?
If that's up to council, we can talk about that at that time.
Thank you.
Resolution one hundred fifty-four, authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with TAG Family L T D partnership acts to negotiate a redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement and memorialize the payment of certain costs to the city during the negotiation of the redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement.
I'm just here to be of help. Thank you.
Yes, I'm playing Mr. Giannetti tonight. So the resolution before you now is really... We've done this many times before. This is to authorize an M O U, a memorandum of understanding between the city and TAG Family Partnership. They are looking at fifteen-eleven New Road to develop a lumber yard and distribution center and a showroom. And I think, if I'm right, I think council has seen maybe at least the planning and development committee. I don't know if the whole council has seen TAG and their online... But they're quite the first-class operation from what it appears. This step basically says they're interested in a redevelopment plan for that site. We're going to negotiate a redevelopment agreement with them. And this document covers the cost of the professionals, whether it's legal counsel, the professional engineers, the planners, that are all involved in generating a redevelopment plan proceeding into a redevelopment agreement. So the M O U is a good thing, covers the city's costs. And they've already signed it, actually. And it's before you this evening for authorization for the mayor to sign as well. Any questions? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Resolution one hundred fifty-five, endorsing performance urban enterprise zone assistance fund project entitled Lake Bay Waterfront Redevelopment Water Main Extension Project in the amount of one hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars.
Chair, can we give an explanation?
Yes.
So this is an urban enterprise zone, as the clerk stated, project that will help us leverage the funding for the redevelopment area of the Lake Bay, specifically as it relates to the water main, which does not extend all the way down to the Marina. This project will then extend all the way to the Marina. So any future development down there, the infrastructure will be in place.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Resolution one hundred six, extending the default cure period for Savage Collaborations LLC under existing redevelopment agreement and agreement of severance.
Counsel, President, and this is council. This one, take a little time just to explain. We had our special council meeting. I think everyone's aware that with regard to the California Avenue redevelopment project, there is an ongoing default condition. We've been working with the redevelopers to try to bring that default to a cure. That hasn't happened yet. The developer has had some issues on their side, which they are asking for more time to work this out with the city. I believe it was council's feeling that sixty days would be a reasonable period of time to extend the cure period for them to eradicate the default and enter into new agreements for the redevelopment of California Avenue. So this resolution basically memorializes that we're in good faith acting to work with them in an effort to cure their default. And we're giving them sixty days to do so from tonight. Assuming that this resolution is adopted, it would extend the cure period to January fifth, twenty-twenty-four. And I, just to add something, I think I mentioned that our special meeting, which was that the documents are well-developed at this point. So sixty days should be a reasonable period to sit down, finish any negotiations that have to be done and entering to these new agreements. Any questions?
Resolution one hundred fifty-seven is an add-on. We're adding approval of a food distribution event on November the eighteenth at City Hall parking lot at twelve-thirty P M.
Our fellowship churches is planning to distribute free turkey in the city of Pleasantville in collaboration with the city governor of Pleasantville. And it is their way of extending goodwill gesture to our city. They've been doing it every Thanksgiving period. And being an executive committee member of the fellowship, we advocate that Pleasantville is served, and they agree with us. So we'll be benefiting here. And I will be restricted of Pleasantville residents. There will be minimal show of evidence that you reside in Pleasantville. Very informative. So you are welcome to be a part of it.
The question is, if you remember there a lot and so many for the senior citizens?
Yes, we are thinking about making some advance for senior citizens. But I informed the body that the executive committee of the fellowship will discuss the modality of how it will be done. But it's a concept that we've set already.
Chair, question. Just for the record, councilman, we're talking about three hundred turkeys, right?
Yes, three hundred turkeys, yeah. And the distribution will continue until the turkey is exhausted.
For all the bills that were paid from that council meeting and this council meeting, because of the way that Monday hit the counter, we had to review between council meetings. So the list on the bills that have been paid, a little larger than normal. But the one you want to look at, at the bottom of the page, we have two payroll, one from May nineteenth, I'm sorry, October nineteenth, and one from November third, six twenty-one and five eighty-one. And then four ninety-seven is medical payments for active and retiring of the Denver State. You have the bills to be paid. If you look on page one, there went down to grade forty-eight. N P P is doing a mural over on Sixty-four East Washington Avenue. That's part of the beautification and money that's allowable from the N P P project in order to emphasize the beauty of the city. Grade forty-eight is the one who also did, I believe, the one on West Jersey Avenue, which was the Blue Comet. Page two, halfway down, you see the A C M Jip. This is a fourth quarter payment for both property liability as well as work competition. That is split between current fund and store utility. If you go to page three, there went down to Commando. This is two bills. One is for the streetscape on Old Turnpike. We're near the end of the project. And the second one, four forty-one, is a second draw for job appeal work that's being done down on Hampton Court. And if you go to page five, down at the bottom, electric concrete. That is work being done, that was done on, being done on Dally Ampar Avenue. This is draw two and three. Because of no council meeting, we can go... They doubled up the payment, we doubled up the payment to them. They've sent in two different bills, draw two and draw three. They're probably sixty percent down to work, if not more. And then if you look on bottom of page seven, this is where we talked about the dredging in the Marina. There's three hundred and forty-one thousand for one draw, then three forty-one for another draw, and then the eleven thousand dollars totaled in there for the change order. So the original amount was six hundred and seventy thousand. It should be six hundred and eighty-one thousand. I believe you should have two numbers there. Maybe at the bottom. Because I know we changed it. I don't know if I have the real copy. But total of six eighty-two. Six eighty-two, one eighty. That includes the change order. On page eight, halfway through, halfway down and more, is the third quarter payment for the shared services with I T, the corporate township, and dispatch for third quarter. And then if you go beyond that, a couple down there, many highs. Just so you're aware of that one. Everything else that we do is for, in order to keep the city up and running. We're winding down greatly. Hopefully, the bill will be reduced as we get into the end of the year because budget numbers are tight. And we will make sure that the spending will cease until we make sure we have enough money to pay the bills. Any questions? Next is public portion. Anyone from the public who wants to speak on agenda items and agenda items on. Please come forward. Time to invite the three minutes of the night. Agenda items on.
Mr. President, my comments are agenda items and a little bit of fault in the complementing area. Is that okay?
You can ask your question. The agenda item question, if you can use the other ones.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President. My question is, Harmon, three hundred South Chester Avenue, the British City Pleasantville. Mr. President, as I forestated, there's a couple of things, and I might need to issue suspended rules and give you just another minute. My only comments are to commend yourself as president of our city council and the comments that you made at the great day of Friday we broke ground at the city's, it's hoped to be, greatest spot in South Jersey. Your comments alluded to the fact that Pleasantville will have one of the finest areas in South Jersey. And I would add to that, you say, country, really. Secondly, I really came tonight to commend our chief of policemen, Chief Williams. I saw three police officers stopping all writing tickets in one day. And I said, that's commendable and should be shared with the community. And not knowing what was going to happen, you know, tonight, walking in and more and more and more policemen. So I think it equals and spells out the fact that with proper staff, we would be able to control the crime in our community and might not need any more cameras than we have because Atlantic City is really going to a big expense with more cameras. Secondly, the presence of our chief of police and much our chief of the fire department. Fifty-three years that I know, we have never had a police chief to come to our legislative meetings. And he's to be commended. And I want that to be known. And it'd be very nice if other department heads could give that time and come to their legislative sessions. The other factor was one oh one at the last council meeting. Thanks to you, my councilman, Mr. Van Leerio, at that council meeting, you kept alive the fact of the sixty thousand immigrants that are coming. And since that, I did attend the commission's meeting, and another look is being taken because we don't want to be on record to say that we don't want or welcome people coming to the great USA. Yes, we do, but come right and come in control. And that's what the president is saying. And hopefully, that's what will happen. And I commend you for keeping that discussion alive. And then thank the entire council for voting it down at that time. I appreciate that. My other little item was that I was able to see our president hanging out with the family at Mount Zion Church. They're very priests. The priests have been around a long time, like myself. And you're intended function on behalf of our great city. And I'm only twelve years away, okay? That's why I get rang up. Twelve, really, eleven years and seven months. I will hit one hundred. Hope I'll be around. And my last comment was that this administration have done something that I couldn't do alone, and that has happened. Resolutions one fifty-three and one fifty-five, and the word keep coming up, that's to pay. That area, there are seven trucks that are rolling, it wakes me at seven o'clock, and that area, and our senator did declare Oakland Avenue, Bayview Avenue, that area as open space. That's on the right side, the Yat face in the middle, we have a situation there which we will talk about right now, and then the Joker Field, and then the whole old high school property is going to really make, I hope I'm alive, but Pleasantville is going to be a beautiful new town in that area. I commend you guys, keep up the good work, and I, speaking for a few people that call, we are happy, campus, keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. President, but.
Anyone else on the public, say in the room, motion closed, the public portion. Motion, second. On the favor. Open discussion outside. Councilwoman Thomas.
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Thomas.
No.
Councilwoman.
No.
Yes, I'd like everybody to look at the camera and say happy birthday to Ms. Mary. She tells me all the time that she watches the council meetings, and that she said we run a really good meeting, so if everybody just look at the camera now and say.
Happy birthday, Ms. Mary.
Thank you. Thanks.
Want to take a motion to close the session.
Motion.
Second. On the favor.
Aye.
Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council Regular Meeting. Today's date is November sixth, the time is twenty, the year's twenty twenty-three, time is seven twenty-two P.M. This meeting has been advertised on the city's newspaper, performance of the Book of Meeting Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Would you please stand for implication and applause. Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic which sustains one nation, one God, indivisible, with every justice of all. Roll call.
Adam Court, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Present.
Kamona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sistro.
Present.
Susanna. Motion. Aye.
Okay, first is ordinance number twenty-four, second reading, public care will be held. It's authorizing acceptance of a donation to the city of the rural property located at eight thirty-seven Church Street, block forty-seven, block twenty-nine, and authorizing the taking of certain actions in connection with that. Public care.
This is a public care, and a public care on this order, this order is number twenty-four. Anyone from the public should speak on it now.
Motion, second.
Aye.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance number twenty-five, first reading, fixing salaries of officials and employees of the city. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Ordinance moved for second reading, scheduled for November the twentieth. Resolution one hundred fifty-three, authorizing a change order for an increase of eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and zero cents in the contract to Starborough Marina Group LLC for the Lake Spade maintenance dredging.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Fidel Arum.
No.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Resolution, I'm sorry. Sistro. I'm ready to jump to the next one, I'm sorry. Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred fifty-four, authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with TAE Family LTD Partnership Act to negotiate a redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement, and memorialize, memorialize the payment of a certain cost to the city during the negotiation of the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred fifty-five, endorsing the proposed Urban Enterprise Zone Assistance Fund Project entitled the Lake Spade Waterfront Redevelopment Water Main Extension Project in the amount of one hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred fifty-six, extending default cure period for Sabres Collaborations LLC under existing redevelopment agreement and agreement itself. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one hundred fifty-seven, which is an add-on grant, the approval of a food distribution event on November eighteenth at City Hall Park in line at twelve thirty P.M.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Fidel Arum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Any motion to approve the bill list?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Fidel Arum.
Yes to all, but six, 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 six. So.
Thomas.
Yes to all, and no to six, 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 six.
So Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistro.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is the public portion, anyone from the public should speak.
Can you put your hand up, please?
Just three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for this time to address you, I appreciate it. My name is Diana Blair, I am a district leader for Dunkin. I have eight locations in this area, including the two in your fine city of Pleasantville. The reason for my appearance tonight is I would like to invite all of you to our grand opening celebration at our newly remodeled location at nine fifteen North New Road. It's going to be a great community event. Before COVID, we used to do all kinds of things. We used to do coffee with the cops, and cocoa with the cops with the kids. We used to do munchkins with mommy, we worked with family services and had them come in and decorate donuts, and under supervision with their parents, we're non-custodial. We'd like to get back to that now that COVID has kind of waned a little bit. So this is the first step. We actually remodeled both locations in Pleasantville. The other one opens next week, and then four weeks after that, we will be doing a second grand celebration. So I'd like to invite the fire chief, the police chief, your honor, the mayor, and any other city officials that you deem would, you know, be put into the company to come to our celebration this Saturday, November eleventh, between ten A.M. and noon. The ribbon cutting is at eleven A.M., and we welcome you to cut the ribbon with us. It's a great community event, there's going to be a radio station broadcasting. We are going to have the first hundred people in line get free coffee for a year. We are raffling off a television, and we just really want to have fun and get together and say welcome, you know, to our new and improved Dunkin' in the city of Pleasantville. I did not bring coffee, but I will to the next meeting, I promise. I do have a letter here with some information, I have several copies.
Okay, thank you.
I also have one of my personal business cards. I did contact some of you and left messages, but I was, yeah, given the opportunity to come and see all of you at once, so I took it.
When does the line open for the first hundred people?
What was that?
The line, when does the line open? Is it the first hundred people get free coffee?
The first hundred people get a coupon book with three hundred and sixty-five coupons for one free coffee, so that's one a day for a year. Absolutely.
I'm seeing you.
And I also invite you for any events you may have, to just contact me, we can work something out and give you a deep discount. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Want to take a motion, close the public portion?
Motion, second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Next, council, council.
Good evening, everyone. I just want everyone to take a ride to sixty-four East Washington Avenue. The mural there with the butterflies is completed, is beautiful. As the young lady was out there painting, it just was a pleasure to see the kids go past while she was painting, taking pictures, and they were just excited with that new beautification, that the new look for that, that building. So if you have time, just ride past there and check it out. The other thing is, we have a skating party at the Brack this coming Friday from two to six P.M. And I'm a little upset that our Greyhounds, they lost the football game, it was a waking on Friday night, but they had a real good season. Their record was eight and two, and they had lost their first game, and they had eight straight wins. So once again, our boys, well, I'm sorry, not our boys, our young men, they broke another record, and they put Pleasantville on the map. So congratulations.
On Saturday, the eleventh day, the eleventh month, the eleventh day, the eleventh hour, is, the ceremony is going to be down on Ansley Avenue. I hope everybody can come out to that, I mean, I'm sure you'll be there. It's always a nice if you're, and they're having something at the American Legion afterwards. Also, I'd like to commend the police and the fire department for getting our bell back. It's part of Pleasantville, and thank you very much. And to the police department, like, you guys apprehended a bank robbery. Even the FBI doesn't get that very often, so you guys did a great job at that. So thank you very much. And I would make the new guy the bell watcher. That's it, thank you.
I want to say congratulations to all the police officer and the fire officer that got sworn in today. I want to say thank you to everybody for coming out, and just keep up the good work of not speeding through the streets, all of you. Thank you, and T, great job on the bank robbery. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Have a good night, God bless.
Captain Barker.
I want to thank everyone for coming, especially, I want to thank former Councilman Harmon, thank you very much. He and Councilman Green were the first people I met when I came in this town, and he has continued to show up. And you, okay. And he continued to show up to encourage us, and I want to commend you for that. Your presence is always an encouragement to us, we appreciate you very much, thank you.
I just want to take a minute to commend your chief police for great work. I have a quick question. The officers that we pushed forward in, two meetings ago, were they already officers, they already police officers?
They're in the police academy.
They're going in the police department, and today we have another four more, so I want to thank you for a job well done, appreciate it, and I wish them all luck, all the poor officers that went, who just were in about two, three weeks ago. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge Bishop Harvard, he did have to run a few games today from work, he talked about the turkeys.
Oh, to talk about the turkeys. You want to use some time to talk about the turkeys?
Best you want to come and speak about the turkeys.
Bishop, the council did approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Unless you can talk loud, whatever you want.
All right, good evening. Thank you so kindly for your vote of confidence. I am still the sitting president of the Fellowship of Churches of Atlantic City and Vicinity. We pretty much have a vision, and our vision is to look at God, and when we look at God, you know, we just kind of see him a little different from other people, and we try to frame it in the context of our theology must affect our anthropology, which is humanity, and our anthropology must affect our sociology, which is our community. So for the last ten years, we've had turkey giveaways in Atlantic City, and through a collaborative grant, we've been able to give away also some shrimmies. This year, I wanted to do something a little different and come over to Pleasantville and try to encourage, you know, the people of Pleasantville for Thanksgiving in tough times. And so I do have three hundred turkeys reserved, and we would like to be a blessing to this community. I have spoken to Dave, I think his last name is Coraccio. He works for the housing authority, because in Atlantic City, we always separate some for our seniors, so I'm working with him for, some seniors don't want a whole turkey, some do, so we are working with him, and what he'll need, and we'll make sure that they get those there. So we are really, really looking forward to collaborating with you and trying to lift the spirits of the residents of those in Pleasantville. Want to say thank you to Reverend Barclay, he served ten years as my secretary of the fellowship, and I wish him well in what he's doing here. But if I can avail any, you know, thing to ease your mind, I'm here, other than that, I'll go.
I want to say thank you, Bishop.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bishop, for just considering Pleasantville here.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's Saturday the eighteenth. We'd like to maybe twelve-thirty, try to, you know, have everything organized and structured that we give out at twelve-thirty, and, you know, if we can get two, three, maybe four tables, some chairs, yeah, some chairs, and maybe some type of covering, I don't know what to call it, I can have the volunteers, you know, that's not necessarily, I can have the volunteers. And we just want to really have, we'll have some music out, you know, just kind of like an uplifting day, because we, the grant that we normally use to also supply, like stuffing and rice and all other things, is stipulated for Atlantic City only. So we are trying to get gift cards for forty dollars that we can give with the turkey, so they can have something with it, so we're going to do our best to give you the best.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay?
Yes, we appreciate it.
All right, excuse my tardiness, though, you know, these times you have to work two jobs. And I got it in as soon as I could. All right, so we're good? Thank you again, I appreciate you all, it's so good to see you. All right.
Right, take care.
Good night.
Oh, yes, I wanted to say thank you to ROTC and the Pleasantville. Oh, yes, I wanted to say thank you to ROTC and the Pleasantville band. Since Linda Wright came here asking for, for them to go to up north with them for Gosling, the band was able to go. And he said that really, really made a difference in the program. She called me and a couple others that's on the committee and the board called and just said what a difference the band made. So I did go to speak with them the other day and they were so excited. I didn't see that they were though. But they were so excited about what they did. You know, they were so proud of themselves. So I'm glad that she came to ask. I'm glad that the school was able to, you know, make it possible for them. Want to say congratulations to our new officers and firefighter. And also to support the veterans program. There's a lot going on that day. So if you could go to the veterans program for a second, I'm sure Commander will appreciate it. And Ms. Mary's party, Ms. Mary Grace, she is such, she's in, we could be like, if I could be guaranteed to be like her, I'd want to live to be under. She is in such her mind, her body, she's moving a little slower, but she had such a good time at her party. And, oh, Councilwoman Thomas, you didn't mention the volleyball team. The girls volleyball team is really, really good. How are they, how they, did they win? Did Bernie get wins? So tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. So their last team is, well, I don't know if it's the last or not, but they play tomorrow at four P M. And that's, everyone have a good evening.
Congratulations to the officers that are going to the academy, the four officers going to the academy. The firefighter, the new firefighter that we got from, what's it, Forties?
Forties.
Forties. And tomorrow is election day. So I'd like for everyone to exercise their right to vote and participate in election day. And also, God bless the city of Pleasantville. Lost your thought, lost your words. And God bless, again, God bless the city of Pleasantville. Can I take a motion?
Motion, second. On the favor.